I was at San Diego.
And there, yeah, there. Okay, we apologize for being delayed in closed session. We'll call up non-agenda public testimony Mary Pat Hut and Alma Hills.
Should I go?
Please.
Okay. My name is Mary Pat Hut. I have been the Fries Elementary Magnet School for Arts and Culture Resource teacher since the program began 10 years ago. I'm here to thank you first for your support. On August 2nd, you voted and recommended that our magnet program position be funded for this school year. However, we have not yet received the funding that you recommended. Fries has 25 partnerships in education with arts organizations in San Diego. Last year, they provided art, music, dance, and theater in the amount of $80,000 to our school. In order to keep this, they are ready, willing, and able this year to provide those same kind of services, but we need to have that program coordinated. It is devastating to think that all of our missed opportunities for our children will happen if the funding does not come through. I am asking that you do all you can to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Trustees. My name is Alma Hills. Last year, I publicly asked you to consider Fries Arts and Culture Magnet School in any way you could as you made many difficult decisions. I want to now publicly thank you for your August 2nd, 2011 decision in which you approved a revised budget and directed the restoration of arts positions at magnet schools if there is at least $2 million balance from the 2010-2011 budget. This decision brought much joy to many in the Fries community, and we are still holding out hope that our arts and culture magnet teacher will be restored. We are hanging on by a thread right now to our partners in education who bring in many resources to our school and offer our children great enrichment in arts and culture. We hope to hear soon whether or not we will benefit from your August 2nd decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my comment is about the closed-session agenda. Again, I'm asking the Board and staff to post the closed-session agenda online. That is a very common mode of communication that is used today, and the reason I was given that it is not posted online is that the Board of Education does not want to do it, and the staff does not want to do it. I think that it's unrealistic to expect the public to drive to the Ed Center where the prices of gas and time, people are short on time when they're trying to take care of their families, just to come out here and read the closed-session agenda. That closed-session agenda is of great interest to the community, and I'm asking you to please post it online. It's very easy. It doesn't require any more time, and in the interest of transparency, I think that should be something that should be done. Thank you.
Chris Wenger.
Good evening, Board. My name is Christina Wenger, and I've been a teacher at Fries Elementary for 20 years. The last 10 years, my third-grade students and I have had the benefit of participating in the Arts and Culture Magnet Program at Fries. We thank you for your support of this amazing program and ask that you please reinstate funding for our magnet resource teacher. Fries students are steadily making academic gains due in part to the marriage of arts and culture with standards-based curriculum. So please fund our magnet resource teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will begin our regular meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, could we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move.
Okay, administrative assignments. Superintendent Koba.
Thank you, President Barrera. Between the last business meeting of the Board, 2nd of August, and the present, we've continued with the assignment of senior managers to different positions, part of the dynamic of completing all the requirements before the school year opens. And I'd like to publicly announce the appointments of the following individuals who already are in place and serving: to Chief Human Resources Officer, Lamont Jackson; to Director of Internal Audit, Stephen Carr; Principal Paradise Hills Elementary, Marisol Marin; Vice Principal Parishing Middle Schools, Francisco Santos; Vice Principal Doyle Elementary, Rudy Dirige; Vice Principal Knox Middle School, Olga Venegas; Vice Principal Pacific Beach Middle School, Marco Chapu; Vice Principal Morris High School, William Lane; three positions in the business area: Food Service Regional Field Managers, Sylvia Kravitz and Shirley K. Ruh-Rumroll; Food Service Acquisition and Production, Fred Espinosa; and finally, Manager Auxiliary Service Controls, Jaime Felix.
Right, thank you. We've got one speaker on the administrative assignment. Citizen.
I want to voice my concerns that administrators need to have adequate training on district policies and laws. As I see vice principals and principals being appointed to school sites, I do not see that they are following district policies and following education code. I think it's very important that as these people start their new jobs, that the district ensures that they know the laws and they know the district policies and follow them.
Okay. And your superintendents in information reports.
Thank you, President Barrera, again. Just want to run down a few things that have occurred in the last few weeks, just highlights. And today was a school opening. It was the first time it rained in anybody's memory. I don't know if there's someone beyond the last three and a half decades, that's as far back as we can go, that it rained today as it would rain on opening day for the Padres. But despite that...
I hope we have a better season today.
Yes, I do, too. But we did open up only one minor fender bender in the hot, humid, wet weather. Had no major impact, no injuries. We did welcome back children across the district. I happen to be at four different campuses. For example, we had our 50th anniversary birthday of O'Wares Elementary School. I was there for a little bit. At Claremont High School this morning, they've got a new Prop S synthetic turf field. They have a few of those opening across the district for the first time ever in Claremont's history. They'll have lights and a synthetic turf field. First home game is 16th of September. But beyond that, we asked questions about transportation because we knew that was going to be an adjustment. No major short showstoppers today, but one day is not an indicator. We'll watch it. Staffing, we'll continue to work that. Coverage across the district, I think Lamont Jackson, HR is doing a very good job, and as requirements come up, we're moving on them. We're trying to communicate. I think the enrollment issue will be the one to watch very carefully. Across this first week, we'll have an indication of whether there were any swings, up, down, or relatively flat. More information next week. The intent here is to try to make decisions as final or decisive as we can. We don't want to be reorganizing schools well into October, but that means having good enrollment data, good staffing numbers. I think the area soup's are working very well with the central office managers, all the various service providers, whether it be IT, finance, HR, facilities, and so on. So far, so good. But it's only day one, and a whole lot more to follow. One of the things I'm looking into is some number of inter-district transfers. Where are the kids coming from and why? That's a question I have. So more to follow on that. A couple of quick items I want to bring up. T-DAP, we want to watch that very carefully. By the new law, by the extension of the law, which was sponsored here in San Diego, we've got from now to the 6th of October to complete all of the vaccination for whooping cough or what's known as pertussis for all 7th through 12th graders. We have an MOU with the County Health Office, which you all have concurred with me that we would act on. It's being ratified tonight by Action, but we're trying to watch the student populations, and as they move or remain unvaccinated, we're going to try to work with the county office to move a clinic there to make it accessible. But parents and kids have been operating on this, but it's because we had, we started with over 40,000 kids. That's still a logistics issue, but more to follow. We're trying to reach out to parents who are both English-language learners and non-English so that that word's out there. We've got to work our way through what's the media for them, whether it be the website, radio, whatever. And in fact, I actually participated in a second press conference in 120 days with the County Health Officer and Dr. Ward, just to reinforce that requirement. Couple other items, renewing our partnerships with San Diego State University. I had the opportunity to address the College of Education, Recovdis Group, and I want to go back there and talk about how we can build that new teacher alignment and the diversity issues that go with that. I met Dr. Hirschman, the president of the school, at that event, and we're going to meet with Dr. Hirschman this month, latter part of the month, I believe we have it scheduled. Also, we opened, welcomed a second cohort to the aspiring administrator program. This is the second year in a row we've got San Diego State and us identifying high-potential, very strongly interested teachers to become administrators. This new cohort will provide us with another 15 to 20 aspiring administrators so that we, when times get better, we can stabilize. We're going to have a pipeline of new administrators to come through to help us. So two of those events. And the last thing I want to mention is we had a terrific welcome-back event last Friday. Ken Blanchard, the three-minute manager, acclaimed management guru, spoke to us free of charge for almost two hours, held several hundred administrators, both at the campus and at the central office, I think Spelbaum, with what he can say and do about servant leadership. And we're working with him to come back in November for a follow-up, a check-in with us on this whole concept of leading, being proactive rather than reactive. That's all I have.
Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, I wonder if we could get a single motion for items D1 and D2?
I move for all of them.
I just want to comment on D2.
Okay, so let's take them separately then.
I know you keep doing the get, I just want to comment.
Oh, you want to comment? Okay, so do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And Ms. Jackson, you want to comment on D2?
Yes, just very briefly on the second item there with the ratification with the county.
Yeah.
And this morning, as I read the actual item, I think it would be nice if we could have more information, and I think that information has to include what clinics we have now. And I was sharing this morning with the staff that it looked like we had clinics at Mission Bay High School and Stanley Middle. And I said, the bulk of our students, though, we have Hoover, we have San Diego High, Lincoln, where we have a large population of low-income families, we should certainly have clinics there. And if the staff could provide us with where these clinics are going to be to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students. I do want to thank them because apparently they did hold clinics at Wilson, Bell, Mann, Roosevelt, and Monroe Clark, and I think they made advance for that. But our high schools are extremely important as well, so I hope that you can give us your plan so that we know.
That would be great.
So we know. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, no further comment. Please vote on items D1 and D2. Okay, great. Okay, and our OEs that we put off from August, so we'll start with our OE3, our learning environment. Superintendent?
President Barrera, that would be one that Dr. Joe Foltzer is responsible for, so I'll ask him to come forward.
Thanks, Mr. Koba. This is the annual report on OE3, and would like you to please recall that OE3 covers three essential areas: the learning environment, the treatment of students, and discipline. And it's a 41-page document that you may have before you right now. There are a total of nine items featured in OE3, and all but two are compliant with noted exceptions. It should be stated that although we have two that are not compliant at this point or with definite noted exceptions, district students remain safe, and the instructional environment is effective and certainly conducive to learning. And as you thumb through the pages, you'll see some of the evidence includes such supports as PBIS, Gear Up, Avid, school safety and discipline plans, and a host of other things. Now, with regard to discipline, OE3 and 3.3 and 3.5 remain noted exceptions, and these two items required increased community involvement as well as some district-wide consistency that just doesn't exist right now, although we're much closer to that goal, as you'll see with an attachment that I placed in your packets. Now, we need to get a good sample of individuals, individuals that are community members as well as from the bargaining units to claim competence in those two areas. Now, we're very close to achieving it, and it's in part through the efforts of what I talked with you about once before, disproportionate discipline committee. Some of the final components of that uniform system, and this is where I'll need to get your feedback and input as you read through that attachment, some of the final components require the engagement of a large group of stakeholders that will talk about consistency between and among the different clusters and areas. So lastly, just want you to know that the committee anticipates having a more refined draft of that uniform discipline plan that, again, I hope you spend some time looking at because I really would like your input and feedback on. As mentioned before, the goal is to prevent disparate kinds of consequences for the same infractions that occur at the different schools, as well as to offer positive consequences and interventions. As you review the first draft of the UDP, or the Uniform Discipline Plan, please keep in mind that the committee's going to pay particular attention to the first two tiers. That's where we think we can offer more alternatives to suspensions. Of course, we won't interfere with the teachers or the principals' right to suspend a student, but we're going to provide some guidelines that we think all should be at least aware of and could use as kind of a listing before they move towards some of the more restrictive consequences. And if I could just say one more thing about the work of the committee and the evolution of OE3, they're in line with the federal government's recent announcement of the Supportive School Discipline Initiative. Some of you may have already read about it. It's a collaboration between the Justice and Education Department. Now, the initiative is designed to address the school-to-prison pipeline. The goals are very similar to what you find in OE3, as well as the work we've done in our Disproportionate Discipline Committee. Their clear intent is to counter negative discipline practices, foster safe and productive classrooms, and ultimately, the desire is to develop a unified and comprehensive system for addressing barriers to learning and teaching and re-engaging, connecting, and connecting students. So more to come on this in the coming weeks, but for now, however, the recommendation is compliant with the noted exceptions.
Joe, when do you anticipate coming back to us with the...
I think we'll have, I put in the plan that we'll come back in the fall. So I'm thinking somewhere between probably around November, October, November is when that will happen. I want to have two more committee meetings first and also have a chance to speak about this plan with the various district stakeholders, DAC, maybe CAC, and some other advisory groups as well.
Any questions on OE3, Ms. Jackson?
I had a chance to look at this just briefly here, and I want to go to the very first part here in the very beginning.
Are you looking at OE3 or the...
OE3 on page four.
Okay.
I'll get it up as I get to them. On page four, I think that it's important for us, and I'm asking for additional information because I think we need to be aware of what's outstanding. And for the Williams Act, we have 92 percent, we have some schools that are still have some outstanding work orders that are considered high. I think we need to know what those schools are and how long those items have been outstanding. Some of them have been outstanding for over a year, and that is concerning to us because if it's a high priority, then we're going to get dinged on it again this year. And so I know last year, I went around to some of the schools, and my particular area, they had identified it last September, and it was this September, and they still hadn't gotten around to it, which caused a much severe penalty when the Williams is coming around. So I think if you give us a list of those schools, we can make sure that all stakeholders are pulling their fair share in the district. Atop that, I think that it's good for us to say that we have an average score of 94 percent for the good, but we have about 85, only 85 percent of our schools are passing. So there's only 15 percent that are out there, and I think that we need to know what that is as well. And we have to look very, and I know that because of our economic climate, our budget is stretched, but when we look over here at this corrective work orders, this is for Mr. Stover mostly, they, you know, you guys are really going to have to try to shore this up because looking at what we had last year, not seeing a lot of movement. And it's important that we are showing it as a district, we are progressing, we're not just identifying things and not moving them forward. And then I want to thank you for including the information and about the PBIS and where we are to date. My only concern with the document that you gave us is I am, and you want feedback from all of us, I'm just giving you this board member's feedback. I am concerned about how the counselors, okay, and other teaching staff are involved in this because what I think we're moving to a system where we're more collaborative, we're not developing something here and rolling it out there. So I think as you have your next couple of meetings, that you may want to have them look through this and them give some feedback so they're not feeling like, here we go again, the district developed something and rolls it out to us. And I think we have a much better response. We're moving in the right direction, so I thank you for your work and your due diligence, both you and the rest of the staff. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board comments or questions on this area? Dr. Evans?
One thing, I was wondering, I think I've seen the statistics elsewhere, but in terms of discipline, referrals, incidents, and so forth, is that kind of information available? I mean, to be able to measure if the, one is following the discipline rules in terms of saying that the proper actions are taken, but in terms of measuring whether there's a decrease in certain offenses and so forth?
Yeah, that information would probably be more difficult to come by, but we could certainly provide the recidivism rate, if that's what you're kind of getting at, the result of interventions that occur at school sites after some referral or disciplinary referral has occurred. I think that's what you're saying.
Right, right. That would be one part of it, yes.
Yeah, and I think that information is available, but probably not in the detail that you'd like to see it.
Okay, so that's another thing to look at. And then I was looking at this, I just lost it right now, the staff survey about the safety at the school and so forth, and this, about how students treat each other, the respect, the feelings of safety and so forth. And I would just imagine that this would be a really great thing, might be revised a little bit, but probably pretty much the same, for students to complete. I mean, we have, you know, the Safe School, the Anti-Bullying Program, and so forth, and to really find out, you know, from the students. You know, because it's interesting when adults say, yeah, the students all feel fine and safe from everything that they can observe, and the students might come up with a different answer.
And there is a survey for students as well. There's a staff and student survey. There's also one we provide for our families.
Oh, great, okay.
On safety?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Great.
Yeah, on the first page of your draft, Uniform Discipline Policy, after page 47 of the report, you talk about, or the report talks about, there are only five infractions required that a public school student must be recommended for expulsion. And these include brandishing, selling, furnishing a firearm, brandishing a knife to another person, unlawfully selling a controlled substance, and then committing or attempting to commit a sexual assault or committing a sexual battery, and then possession of explosive. I was interested in number four. So if it's a non-sexual assault or a non-sexual battery, then that's not considered a must-expel?
That's correct.
And but we could, and what's our, I mean, I know we have a number of staff process...
We do have the numbers, and I think at most schools, the staff, the administrative staff, does move toward expulsion when that kind of infraction occurs.
I can just share that if it is considered major injury, then that student is expelled, and it's typically defined by something that is, you know, disfiguring or caused the student to go to the hospital. If it is a minor injury, for example, a fight comes to mind, there are three infractions prior and interventions along the way. So it depends on the seriousness of the injury, and we define it as a district.
Yeah, and what I was trying to get at here is that the mandated, of course, offenses are, these are events that we can't interfere with the consequence. So if one of these mandated occurrences takes place, then we need to move towards expulsion. What's happening now, and in part the reason for the committee, is we're expelling a number of students, primarily students of color in large numbers, for non-mandated offenses. So the work of the committee is looking at that and looking at alternatives and looking at ways in which we could maybe stem the tide, so to speak.
Okay, I guess my concern is that, as I understood, the three incident, and I don't know if that's clearly the policy, the procedure, but I guess I'd like to know, coming back, what is the, if you will, norm or consistency with other school districts, maybe in the county or the state, on number of incidences before a non-sexual assault and non-sexual battery has occurred? And also, that's an area I'd like to look at. I have a concern that, I've heard, you know, you hear a lot of things that we are less stringent than other districts in the region, and I don't know that, so I'd like to find out. I'm not saying we should make our policy based only on what other districts do, but at least that's an area that I have some concern about and would like to maybe have further discussion on or focused on by the committee before it comes back.
Yeah, I'll certainly provide that information, but I've heard just the opposite, that we're much more stringent than other districts, especially in regard to the zero tolerance policy.
Thank you.
Great.
Simple approval, as noted.
Move approval, as noted. There are seconds.
Second.
We've got one speaker, citizen. Thank you, Dr. Foltzer.
I think it's important that our school site councils take the school safety plan seriously and start implementing that. I don't see that happening out at the school sites. I would also like to see this Safe Campus Plan include video, training on first aid training for each and every employee. That also is not happening at school sites, first aid training for every employee. There should be a policy that bullying can also not be done by teachers. Toxic teachers need to be documented and removed from this school district. There are a lot of them out there. Parents know about them, their peers know about them, and yet, they keep their jobs and we lose great teachers. That needs to be a focus for this district. Let's see. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so we've got a motion in a second to approve the staff recommendation on OE3. Please vote. Great, thank you. Okay, our facilities report. Superintendent?
President Barrera will have Drew Owens come forward. This is a monitoring report update.
Good evening. This is a re-monitoring of OE9 facilities, which was originally presented to you in February 2011. At that time, it was presented as having two exceptions, and so what you have in front of you and highlighted in yellow within the report are the areas where we are addressing the exceptions. The exceptions were in item 9.2. The superintendent will project lifecycle costs as capital decisions are made, and also in 9.10, which gets into public use of the facilities. Under 9.2, it is indicator number three, which talks about our major repair and replacement, repair and replacement plan, and the idea that it considers lifecycle costs as part of the plan. What we tried to provide in the text is that we have been continuing to work through those plans on various building systems to get consistency, to get a solid plan across the district. So that's what we highlight within that one. Item 9.10, again, that's the superintendent will not unreasonably deny the public's use of facilities as long as student safety, student functions, and the instructional programs are not compromised. We provided a more detailed response, again, in the yellow, addressing two key areas. We took from our meeting last time, when we presented this in February, that we needed to do more dialogue and outreach with the school sites, and we did that in this time period, and we've seen some improvement in consistency in following the district policy. The other area within that item 9.10 that we touched on was in...
The other area within that item 9.10 that we touched on was insurance coverage. And what you have within the text is a revision to the policy, our insurance policy. We reviewed it with risk management, and we, I think, consistent with the board's direction, provided a clause toward, at the last, I believe, two sentences of the policy, that we consider this, based on the proposed use, the district's discretion, we would lower or potentially even reduce the insurance requirements, again, based on the intended use of the facility. And that's what I have for OE9.
Okay, we've got one speaker, and then, citizen. Thanks, thanks.
I may have misread Mr. Rollins' report, but I understood it was going to be a waiver, a waiver of insurance? That's my concern, is that some groups would be provided waivers of insurance? Who would determine that? My concern is that Mr. Rollins' office serves as a checks and balances of what's going on in the school sites. There are groups out there that are operating under, they're not even operating within the laws. They haven't incorporated, they're not registered with the California Attorney General's office. These are all things that protect the public from fraud and misappropriation of funds and all of those things. The requirement of insurance protects our children and the parents that are out there participating in these events that these third parties are asking to rent the facilities for, and I think it's a very poor idea to waive insurance for any group. If they're going to be on public land, they should be insured in case of injury or food poisoning or whatever it is that could happen when people are doing these activities.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, do you have--
Yes, I do. And so, I want to thank the staff for both of those modifications. I think that on the second one, which we just spoken about, if they have less than 50 people, low instructional classes, I think that it does help the community where people want to use our facilities but just cannot afford the insurance. So, I thank the staff for trying to find a way to do that. So, I move approval with noted exceptions.
Okay, I just had one question, I don't know if other board--
Yes.
Yeah, we've got a motion in a second. Drew, could you comment briefly on the grand jury concern over the use of the facilities to supposed for-profit entities? Does anybody--
If you don't mind, I'm going to pass it to my--
Please.
Friends who are closer to it.
Please do, yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Randy White, and I'm a real estate specialist in the Real Estate Management Instructional Facilities Planning Group. And the grand jury, as you know, asked us to try to bring in line a number of schools that were making deals on the side, and we have been working diligently to bring the schools in line. Most of them have, and, you know, every once in a while, we've found somewhere that we've missed, but I would say that most of these are high schools, and they are being more compliant.
And what are we doing as a district to ensure across the board compliance? And when you say bring them online, online with what? What is the--
I'm sorry?
When you say we're trying to make sure that schools are in line with, are you talking in line with the policy in--
Right, with the policy, that they're not out there working with outside agencies, you know, saying, well, we'll let you use the field if you do this. They're coming through the rentals office, they're going through the procedure that you all have approved, and they're being charged accordingly.
So, when some entity uses a field or uses a facility, does the district need to sign off on that, or is that something--
Yes, we permit every outside agency that is using our fields after the school hours.
So, in the circumstances where, you know, we found that schools are not necessarily following district policy, is somebody just saying, go and use the field and not letting us know about that, or?
That was happening in the past, yes.
Okay, okay, all right. Yes, Superintendent?
If I could comment on that as well, we have, in the last couple of years, had opportunities to remind principals, either in principal forums with legal briefing, or logistics briefing, or through email reminders, that the facilities must be reviewed, all factors considered. The local campus leadership does not make the final approval, it must come to the real estate office in accordance with the Civic Center Act, be assessed for what it is, and based on whether it's a profit or nonprofit entity, based on rates that you approve on an annual basis, will validate their authorization to be on the premise, and if there's any charge to them to accommodate things like custodial cleanup. We have gone on record as saying that, in the grand jury's report, that much of what was identified was in our past, our significant past, in that the data was speculative in nature.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Silver?
Yeah, we had already, during the reorganization of the real estate group, bringing it under Mr. McPhail, and we'd already identified that as an issue before the grand jury report even came out--
Yeah.
--and had put in place the safeguards and a more stringent policy with the schools. So, in that sense, we had, we were one jump ahead of them--
Yeah.
--in identifying that and solving it ourselves.
Okay, great, thank you. We've got, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Evans?
Yeah, and maybe Mr. Silver has this too, but in terms, because I don't want to go just on anecdotal information, but the issue is we have certain policies, but in terms of implementation, as far as how easy is it for the community to access these facilities? And like, one of the questions I would have is, I understand it needs to be approved by the district office, but there's some contact with the local campus too. And so, I'm kind of wondering, what is the incentive, say, on the part of a principal to be encouraging of the use of these facilities or not? I mean, a principal could potentially just see it as a headache or some additional detail as opposed to something that's bringing in more revenue to the school, number one, and number two, that's a community service. So, you know, I realize there's a policy, but I don't know when the community's coming forward, and this is just based on one or two emails, how easy it is to--
Our intent is to create uniformity to the district policies by having the agencies come through the district for the use of the property. However, we are, we have, in fact, worked out arrangements with individual schools to share the revenue. So, there is a revenue sharing for the use of the properties, which is a very, you know, high incentive for the schools per se. We're not, we're not looking in any way to limit or make more difficult--
Yeah.
--or more troublesome the use of the facilities by the public. What we want to have happen is uniformity in our policy, and then, within those boundaries, we work on an individual basis with the school to create revenue-sharing opportunities.
Okay, so all a principal or administrator would have to do is simply direct them to the real estate office--
That's correct.
--to make the deal.
That's correct, and then we may indeed go back to the principal, in the sense of discussing the implementation, the details of the arrangement, the specifics, that's on a site-by-site basis, but all of that's within the overall district policy.
Okay, that helps, great.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to approve OE9. Please vote. Great, thank you. And--
I move approval of, yes, item E3.
Second.
Motion in a second, please vote. Great, okay.
Move approval of the IF10 item?
Yeah, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
E4, yes.
E4? Any board questions or comments? If not, please vote. Thank you.
I really appreciate all the work staff did on--
Absolutely, yeah.
--the IF10, and I know it was a difficult situation, and thank you, Mr. McPhail and your staff for that work.
Okay, move E5 as well?
Move approval of item E5, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
That'll be the second.
Excellent, yeah. Okay, and we are adjourned. Thank you.